Monday, March 12th, 2018, regular session of the Animals at City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. 1.0 roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
2.0, motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings. February 20th, February 26th, 2018, special council meeting. And February 26th, 2018, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve special meeting on February 26th, and minutes from regular meeting following on February 26th.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Cody. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carry. 3.0, public hearings, none. 4.0, presentations. 4.1, Nancy Schaefer regarding pit bull prohibition.
Nancy Schaefer, 803 North Division Court, Anamosa. And I am here tonight to ask you to not approve the ordinance in front of you for the third and final reading concerning the pit bull ban. In the dog world, just like in the human world, there's something called body language. The body language of a pit is very difficult to read. Before an attack, they tend to not bark, growl, or show a body stance that the average person could recognize. If you watch this video, you see a little tail wag there. But the minute this stuffed dog moves, that's the reaction. And it's a quick reaction, and you notice it went right for the throat. A lot of dogs grab and chomp. I've never said that pit bulls are the only dog that bites. My concern is the type of bite and the mauling that they do. So other dogs are going to do a grab and chomp and release. A pit bull is putting its teeth in you. It's not a bite. You can compare with others. The pit will jump up and bite deeply into a victim's body. They are known to grab and hold, forcing the bite to be deeper. As you can see here, they have an incredible force with their bite. Let's grab and hold and shake. Pit Bull Rescue Central recommends all pit owners have a brake stick. Here's a quote from their site. "Since pit bulls have a strong biting background, we recommend that pet owners also have a braking stick as a precaution." The man in this video is recommending carrying a brake stick with you at all times. He advises using a tense stick as they are not cause for alarm to the general public. You can see this is in a controlled atmosphere. This is a trainer. He raises pit bulls. This is not a dog that was trained for aggression like military or police. You can see how much difficulty he's having getting that in there and getting that to release. Imagine if that wasn't just that pillow thing on the end. It was somebody's limb or another animal. And what person is going to be able to get control of that effectively? Because of their style of attack, victims are caught off guard. They are not prepared, and that increases the severity of the attack. Another man comes in to help, but they grab the limb of the guy in the yellow shirt. And they go after the other guy. Nobody else of those five or six people there is being very effective. You can see those two pits pulling this probably 190-pound man away. And then they go after somebody else, and they're blurring out the picture because I imagine his clothes have been ripped off at this point. And then they're after somebody else. Pit bulls are an overbred breed throughout the United States. I visited with a former animal shelter manager over the weekend. Her worry is Anamosa will become a place for backyard breeders. It is easy breeding and fast money for breeders. Pit bull puppies, yeah, they're cute and they're adorable, but people don't understand the strength they have as they grow older. Socialization is more difficult and a reason that many end up in shelters. There's a shelter in Mount Pleasant that at times has close to 100 pit bulls. Shelters like these would certainly keep the shelter in Jones County supplied with pits to adopt out. Then we're encountering another problem. There are shelters diluting pit bios to get them out and in homes. They're moving them from one shelter to another and losing the paper trail that shows their history. Inexperienced people are adopting pit bulls. If there is a change and the pit bull is showing aggression, resource guarding, or unpredictable behavior, these overwhelmed, unprepared families are trying to handle an animal that they are not equipped to do so. Overwhelmed, many in order to avoid paying the shelter to take the pit back will dump them somewhere in the county. I believe in the leash law that we have right now and the licensing law that we have. I license my dogs with the city, and I also license the service dogs in training that I have temporarily in my home. And I will continue to do that. But I do not believe enforcement of leash, licensing, and at large should do away with the ordinance we presently have. I find it disturbing that it's been admitted here numerous times that many people have dogs in their homes that are in violation of the present ordinance. Because you are not in agreement with an ordinance does not justify a citizen, thumbing their nose at city officials and knowingly breaking the law. I think our employees are educated enough to make an informed decision if an animal is presenting as a pit or a pit mix, and they will follow through with enforcement. I believe a county attorney is able to prosecute successfully anyone in violation of this ordinance. I worry for the safety of our citizens. I worry for the daycare kids that walk down the street. A pit bite is different than another dog bite. I thank you for sitting where you're sitting and listening to people's passions and their concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
4.2, Leann Boone, Chamber of Commerce.
Leann asked me to talk, Doug Edel, 204 East Walnut Street. She's going to be handing out a little information. The Animals at Chamber of Commerce, for a while, has been considering another citywide event. Just to kind of celebrate the community and give something fun for people to do. With the new trail that's coming and the new bike rental service that's coming, a couple of ideas were kicked around, and we are considering or pursuing a fun bike ride event that would start and end in Anamosa. Once the bike ride was over and into the evening, we're considering planning an event with a beverage garden and a band that anybody could come and attend. So there's been a group of people meeting to discuss this and start planning for it. We are looking at the weekend after the Fourth of July. That's Saturday, July 7th. We would register riders in the morning. The riders would sign a release, and they'd be expected to basically take care of themselves for the rest of the day. We would expect riders to be, there'd be a few different routes of various lengths to hopefully appeal to different riders. This would not be a competitive event. It would just be for people to do at their leisure. We'd expect the riders to be returning back to Anamosa from early afternoon till maybe up to 6:00 PM. But there's no set, no set ending time. At the beginning of the event, we would probably, we would have volunteers that would help direct traffic and control traffic. We'd probably want some assistance from city staff and the police department in choosing the best routes to get into and out of town and how to help control traffic for the safety of the riders. We'd also look into putting up additional signage just to alert riders that are alert drivers, that there'll be a lot of riders on the road that day. We really don't anticipate a whole lot of need for city staff to be involved with the day of the event apart from maybe helping with the traffic control. So then after the bike ride event, the beverage garden, we're looking at a 6:00 PM start time. We're looking at having this downtown on Main Street. So we'd want to close a portion of Main Street. And we'd have a controlled area to serve beverages out of, which would include beer. We're looking at a five-day class, I think it's Class A, just beer-only license. And then, and the chamber would keep the proceeds from those sales. So we, I guess we're open to discussion with the city about the best way to do that, to make it safe for everyone, and make sure that it's a good event for the whole community. Another thing that we talked about was similar to, like the fair does, maybe look into hiring a couple of reserve deputies or police officers to help us with security there. So looking over, I see Tyler. I did talk to Tyler too about maybe using the Lawrence Center for riders' comfort for the restrooms and the showers there. So that might be another request that we would have from the city is to let us use the Lawrence Center for that day at no charge. So, do you have anything to add, Leann, or? So I guess at this point, we're not making any official requests. We just kind of want to start the process and let the city council know what we're, what's going on. And we'll come back with specifics on times, street closure requests, and all of that stuff.
Do you, I have one question. Do you guys have an idea when the rent bikes are going to come to town? Like, do you have?
Sometime in April.
Oh, so they'll be here by?
They'll be here.
Oh, great. That's exciting.
Rent a bike and go for a ride with us on July 7th.
So this entire, excuse me, day's event will be chaired by the chamber?
Well, let us know how we can help. Okay, great. Thank you.
4.3, John Custis, emergency sirens.
My name is John Custis. My wife Donna and I live at 407 East Cedar Street. We recently bought the residence at 1120 North Williams, next to the water tower. There is an air raid siren very close to my backyard. Sometime in January, I believe, I talked to Mayor Barnes about this. On February 12th, I spoke to Tammy Coons and Chief Simonson about this. The chief told me that at that time, he would get the specs on the siren for me and bring it up on the city council. Those things did not happen. On February 27th, I sent out emails, letters to the mayor, city council, city administrator, the police chief requesting the information on the siren, asking that it be disabled. I had five council persons and Sergeant McNally contact me about this. Sergeant McNally advised on March 5th, he had located the documents on the siren and passed them on to the city administrator. That was one week ago. No word from him. From the start, I did not want to make a big deal out of this. I certainly didn't want to have to come down and do this in front of the city council. I'll read part of the letter I sent on the 27th. Some of it is kind of redundant. "I am writing this to you because of my grave concern of the air raid siren that is located a few feet from my property line. I was at the house one time when it went off. After I picked myself up off the ground and calmed myself down, I went in and asked my mother-in-law if she wanted me to speak to the city about this siren. She insisted I'm not, that it will be okay, and it doesn't go off that much. I believe my dear mother-in-law was raised in a generation where you do not question the city fathers, or doctors, or anybody in authority. I'm not of that generation. I know loud noises, and that is way too loud for residential area. I cannot believe that anyone with any common sense at all would think this was a good idea to place this siren in a little old lady's backyard." Oh, she lived there for 16 years and had severe hearing loss. "We've been slow about remodeling the house because Donna's grief for the loss of her mother. But we are now up there about every day working on the house. We plan to move in this spring. I spoke to Dale Barnes about this back in January. On February 12th, I went to City Hall and talked to Tammy Coons, the city administrator. That same day, Bob Simonson came to the house and looked it over. He said he would give me the specs on the siren and get back to me and bring it up to the resident, the city council. I told the chief that I did not think it was absolutely, I thought it was absolutely wrong to place that siren in somebody's backyard, pointed at bedroom windows. But that I was a combat veteran with 100% disability for PTSD. I told him my wife has serious health problems as well. I told the chief that I felt it was a danger to her hearing, that my PTSD was triggered by loud noises, especially sirens, and that the worst would not be the startled response I would suffer, but the crippling anxiety I would be waiting for the next siren to go off. Of course, I did not hear back from the chief. After I heard that he was probably to be fired, I called the city hall and asked to be put on the agenda for that night. February 26th, a lady said I could only see the council after submitting a request in writing. She also said I could only do this if I submitted it the Wednesday before the council meeting, two weeks away. I asked her if she could put me on the list now, and she said no. It had to be in writing. She did not ask what this was pertaining to and seemed totally unconcerned that I felt it was a danger to the public safety and a direct danger to her hearing. I walked back to the fence line, and I could clearly see with my poor eyes the bright yellow plaque on the electrical box at the bottom of the pole that holds the siren. Bold letters, "Wear ear protection." I believe this would be a very solid reason for the city to immediately make available to the type of siren this is and the specs and the manual and the chiefs, that the chief said he would provide me with. And respectfully requesting the city copy, also give me a copy of the FEMA guidelines that were in place when this device was installed. Or give me whatever legal grounds they have to risk our safety." I'll skip some of that. And I sent that out to the mayor, council persons, city administrator, and police chief. And I expected a response and did not get one. It took me about two hours to locate the information online, download it, read through it, and highlight it. I believe this is a siren. It's called the T-128. In this, it says, "The 128 decibel rating is measured at 100 feet from the siren based on FEMA Emergency Management Guidelines." The T-128, I'm just hitting the highlights here. It should be mounted approximately 50 feet above the ground per recommendations for FEMA guidelines. Safety precautions. Qualified, experienced personnel should attempt this incident, should only attempt this installation. Ear protection must be worn when conducting any type of testing on the system. Caution. Siren sound pressure is 128 decibels 100 feet from the sign. Bigger font. Caution, double exclamation point. Everyone in the vicinity of the siren during testing should wear ear protection during operational tests. Failure to do so can cause severe, severe hearing damage. The system specialist should be consulted to determine the specific requirements. Also states the FEMA CPG 1-17. Test and start-up caution, three explanation points. Caution again. Hearing protection must be worn at all times to prevent hearing damage when the siren is operating. Siren produces 128 decibels at 100 feet. I looked up the FEMA regulations. It starts out, it talks about attenuation. And basically, the siren at 100 feet puts out 128 decibels. Attenuation is that those decibels drop as you go away. I would also think that they would be louder as you went towards the siren. All of these factors suggest that the warning should, sound must be loud, loud enough to overcome attenuation with distance, to exceed the background noise and to attract attention. Yet it cannot be too loud, or there will be a risk of injury or hearing for some people who listen to it. This risk, which is discussed in greater detail in Section 5B, can occur when people are exposed to audible warning sounds exceeding 123 decibels. The sounds from the audible outdoor warning devices are generally focused into the horizon, horizontal plane surrounding the device. Sound radiating upward would be wasted. The sound radiating downward, close to the device, is unnecessary and may be hazardous. I would assume that's because you get the sound coming down and bouncing off the earth. It refers to Section VIB. Says, "Hearing damage. For the test purposes, audible warning devices should be so located and operated that no person is likely to be subject to the sound level great enough to cause hearing damage. A suitable limit for this purpose, based on the recommendations of the Committee on Hearing, Bioacoustics, Biomechanics, CHABA, of the National Academy of Science, is 123 decibels." Says, "No person shall be exposed to the sound of an outdoor device if it exceeds 123 decibels." Noise-sensitive locations should be avoided. Hospitals, schools, residential buildings should be avoided. I own a rangefinder. According to my rangefinder, the siren is 90 feet from my bedroom window and about 90 feet from my deck. The information I found clearly states that the siren puts out at least 128 decibels at 100 feet. Hearing loss occurs at 123 decibels. This is less distance, much louder, and much more dangerous in my backyard. Can you imagine little kids in my backyard getting tender, tender little eardrums busted because the city is bogged down in its own defensive tactics and hide-in-the-corner attitude, that they no longer know the right from wrong? I also do not think the siren was installed properly because the electrical box, which holds the warning sign, is pointed not towards the city employees, but often in the wilderness, towards the deer. I would believe that. I'm just guessing, but I would think that'd be an OSHA violation. I formally requesting again, the siren next to my property be disabled immediately.
Question?
Thank you. I think you said it very well, John. Understand your problem.
Is this the same siren that was over here that they shut down?
No, that one was, that one was removed.
It's a totally different kind of, type of siren.
This one is brand new.
And what does this one pull off? What do you prefer that?
I can see everyone's toward a fire. Nothing anywhere past nine. I think it's nine o'clock.
I, I got one more question. Are the days of the siren going away? Because I was in a meeting one time, and these went off with like 40 people in the room. They just started peeping because of a warning system.
I don't think they're going away. I mean, I don't know. Obviously, the mobile communication systems are coming in, but it doesn't erase. There's people that don't have theirs, or they're away from them, or whatever. That there's always going to be that kind of need.
So if we were to take it down, where do we put it back up? And how do we contact people in the event of emergency? And how do we contact people in the event of emergencies?
So, I, I guess I'd, I'd hand you guys, uh, three different documents. The first one is the specifications on siren. It is a hundred and twenty-eight decibel at a hundred feet, that looks rated at, and then on that second page, rated at a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty-eight decibel. I also gave you guys a aerial photo from the assessment website. It's not a perfect measurement, but it does show roughly, it looks like the siren is roughly twelve feet from the property line. And, uh, at least sixty-five, or yeah, at least sixty-five feet from the back of his house. So it would be pretty, I mean, if it's a hundred and twenty-eight decibel at a hundred feet, it's probably louder at that distance. My, my understanding was this was just installed in the same location as the old siren, so we wouldn't like a, uh, necessarily a study down to, to decide exactly where it should be located.
Do we know who installed it? You've already put in a call.
Yeah, um, radio communications, uh, uh, Cedar Rapids.
And don't we kind of rely on their expert keys to know, hey, we can't put the new one here because?
And I briefly talked with, with the guy, and I said, you know, it should must be at least a hundred feet from a, a property line, and he said we put it in where the electrical was, where the pole was last time, and that's just what they did. I don't know more than that. So then I also gave you, just highlighted sections from the document that, uh, John referenced, the FEMA document, that is kind of the guideline for where it should be placed, and I highlighted things, but they didn't really show. I didn't, I didn't do a co- copy, so. Anyway, that, that first paragraph on page one, just again, highlights the importance of the system. They're not just there to, you know, annoy people, but they're there to provide important information. I could not find anywhere where it said, well, okay, so on that, on page IV, it lists some of the requirements to have. Of course, the bottom, the last bullet point, the requisite sound is component details. The propagated sound must be ten decibels greater than the background noise. And the outdoor, uh, P A, P A S equipment must be able to project a hundred and twenty decibels of sound at least one hundred feet. So that's the number that there's, that our, uh, communication systems use when they, I mean, the main arm twenty-eight. So it exceeds that requirement. It has to be a hundred and twenty, so that it can reach a distance of people to inform them of a, a storm event or a fire. It does later say, as John mentioned, on page thirty-three, fourth bottom, uh, under mounting height. Mounting height, it should be, uh, minimum mounting height is typically thirty-five to fifty feet, ours is fifty-five feet. Above the local terrain is based on the assumption that the device output center line is horizontal plane, meaning if you're, the hundred feet is standing right in front of it, and since it's fifty-five feet up, the sound disperses more because you're further away. But, uh, anyway, what it's saying is that the height should not be, or the, the decibel should not be above one twenty-three for anyone at the ground level. And at the distance we're at right now, it probably is, so.
Is there a law, Jacob? I mean, I don't know, you know, it's like John being that close. I would think there should be something that it needs to be farther away from a residence.
Well, it, it's meant to be among the resident, I mean, it, uh, I, I, I think we need to, it, it can't just be taken down. We have responsibility to notify people of these situations. But I think we do need to move it further away from his house. It's too close at this point. But it has to be close enough to the residents that they can hear it, otherwise it's no use, I mean.
Yeah, correct.
So it serves a purpose. It's just where exactly does it need to be located?
The siren is now, I'm, I'm three quarters of a mile away, and I can't hear it in my house. I have to step outside to hear it. When it was downtown here, we always heard it. Winter, summer, didn't matter. We always heard it.
That's the biggest complaint I get about the sirens, is that people can't hear them.
And I, I think, I don't know, but I think it's shooting over the top of most of the town. And I should be able to hear it from what they say. It should, it should affect me, uh, three quarters of a mile, and I just can't hear it, so.
I think it shoots over, because I'm Davis and Sycamore, and I'm like you, really. I can hear the one on Garnavella. It must come that way, but that one's, like you said, shooting over. You know, that's, I've noticed that too, that it's.
My, my guess is it's an ACDC, uh, siren, and you have a generator at the water plant, right?
Yeah, yes, correct.
So, cost, I would think.
Well, in the event that there was some catastrophic failure, there's backup power at the water plant as well.
Right.
There's also battery backup.
Bulge is dropping what it is, and cable costs a lot of money. I would imagine you, you didn't want to spend any more money than you had to.
Right. If there's plenty enough room up there, I think we could find a reasonable spot to shift it to, depending on the cost and everything else, or we gotta shift it someplace else where people can hear it, because if you can't hear it now, it's really doing no good.
To the best of my understanding, I think if we got it a hundred feet, bottom of the post, it's the property line, that should, I mean, that should make it better. I mean, it's still gonna be loud, that's just because you're closest to it, the best. Somebody has to be close to it, that's unfortunate for the best. If you had a hundred feet from your, the base, you're gonna be more than a hundred feet from the top of the tower.
But, but the other part of this is, if, if we do end up moving this, this would be a great time to take a look at.
Other options?
Well, not necessarily other options, but having that company come in and do some type of line of sight to know where this thing is actually projecting and maybe adjust it, so at his house and so forth, they can actually hear it. You know, instead of just, oh, we're throwing it up and we're good. Now's the time to take advantage of it, get it so that it's actually doing good.
If it needs to be aimed different, because I live a block.
It goes around, but.
Yeah, we all live in the same area. You can't hear it either, right?
Well, I don't hear it, and the boys don't hear it. They don't bark and howl.
So it needs to be.
Well, and I would think that the company would, I mean, if it's twelve feet from a property line, just because that's where the old one was, they should have brought in with advisement, hey, today's regulations are, it has to be blah, blah, blah. I mean, we don't know that. That's their job. I expect when I hire a contractor to come into my home and I say, I want that, then to say, well, the regulation is can't have your light switch in your shower, you know? I expect that they're the ones that tell me, and so, I'm just kidding.
Well, I, but I'm gonna say, I, I agree with you, but I'm taking into consideration who they may have talked to at that point in time and what was decided, so.
If you go up there and look, the siren is kind of in a fence that I had always assumed was the property line, but evidently it isn't. The property line must be, yeah, the property line must be on that side of the fence, isn't it?
It's, it's.
If you look at this map.
Yeah, at the, at the corner, it's about eighteen feet.
Past the property line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So I think we can agree that none of us sitting on the council are experts on placement regulations and requirements for this, this siren or any other emergency sirens. Who do we contact to come in, look this over, and rectify, drive to resolution?
I mean, I could do some research on, you know, sort of people come in, but, uh, I mean, we can always ask for your communications, but I, see what they think.
Can they use a sound meter like up next to John's house and find out what the, what his decimal reading is at his?
Uh, yeah, I would think that's a process.
Do we have one in the police department, decimal reading?
Would it be possible to make a comment on that subject at this time?
So, look. See if they can test it and see what the decimal level is at John's house, so we know what we're working with. Move it back if we need to, or some way to make it safe.
Yep. And they would probably know if you move it X amount of feet, that the decibels would drop, getting closer to their house would
Right.
Hopefully help.
How much would it drop? Do we test all our systems in these storm seasons? Do we go and test all the sirens at all this time?
First week of February, they do it all as a national.
I wouldn't test. Jacob, I would emphasize that whoever comes in doesn't just focus on John's residence. Because the last thing we want to do is move this, and all, in a sense, move it and be in violation of another. So we need to find, you know, obviously the most robust place to position this siren and fall within all the FCC or FEMA regulations. John, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Unfortunately, I think this is something that, if it was known, it slipped through the cracks. And it's now our place to rectify it. From what I, from what I heard in the neighborhood, uh, that was put up there about the time this one came out. If it wasn't a siren, maybe, but, and they rang it for the moon whistle as well. And my neighbor's Mrs. Heims came down and complained, I believe, uh, Mr. Hatcher was the mayor at that time, and he took the moon whistle as part of the house. Yeah, dating back a few years. I know. Uh, I gotta believe, we just can't disable this.
I don't think.
No.
No.
It's, it's an emergency siren, so unfortunately, it's gonna remain active, but we need to move rapidly.
We'll get it moved for you, John. Don't worry.
What? What is procedure for public comments on presentations of this nature?
Usually we just, if they have a comment later.
Well, I mean, obviously, John could present because he had requested this to be on the agenda. Uh, I'm just inquiring about other public that would have comments in relation to this.
Do we, you normally, well, we're gonna be discussing our.
That's, that's our discussion.
Yeah, that's a good.
That's later in the.
That's a good thought, though.
Yeah.
Need to take into consideration, once we move on from this, public has no comment on this agenda item.
Well, it's not something we need to vote, make a motion, vote on, is it?
No, this is just information only.
Yeah.
This isn't an action item?
I mean, it doesn't need to become an action item later on, is my question. It can be city hall, indeterminate, needs to be moved and moved it without us ever having a gender rating vote on it? That was my question.
But it sounds like none of us know. We're assuming that what can or can't happen.
If you have issues, Jacob, let us know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Five point O proclamation. It's five point one Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April twenty eighteen. It's time to speak up Sexual Awareness, Assault Awareness Month, April twenty eighteen. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread, widespread and impacts every community member of animals, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community, as seen by statistics indicate that one in five women and one in thirty-three men will be raped at some point in their lives, and whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of eighteen. Whereas young people experience heightened rate of sexual violence in youth ages twelve to seventeen are two point five times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas on campus, one in five women and one in sixty men are sexually assaulted during their time in college, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence, prevention, supporting survivors and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in Anamosa through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. Whereas Anamosa strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It is time for all, all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now, to therefore be it resolved that we, the Anamosa City Council, join advocates in communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence, along with the United States government and the state of Iowa, we do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Council. Council action items, six point O, Community Betterment. Six point one, Discussion and Possible Action on Third Reading of the Ordinance Mending Chapter Fifty-Five of the City Code Animal Protection and Control to Drop Breed-Specific Prohibition.
Just before tonight's council, I was handed this letter. The individual was planning to be here, but an emergency came up, and obviously she could not be in attendance. So I'm just gonna read this. "My name is Mary Eylers. I live at three eighteen Deerwood Drive in Anamosa. One day I was walking down to get my mail with my dog, Mandy, a Shih Tzu on a leash. Out of nowhere, a pit bull had Mandy's head in its jaws. I tried to move the dog away from my dog, but to no avail. I had, I have never encountered a dog with such strength. I screamed, and the owner of the pit bull appeared from the other side of a park pickup, and managed to get his dog off of mine. I picked my dog and tried to calm her. She was trembling. I finally sat her down and continued, and we continued to the mailbox. We headed back to our home. When we reached the same place where Mandy was attacked, the same thing happened all over again. I tried to help my dog, but I was no match. I screamed, and the owner once again appeared and got his dog off of mine. He laughingly told me what a friendly and gentle dog, gentle his dog was, not after what I witnessed. He appeared to have little control of his dog. I had bruises all over my legs. The next day I went down to the police station, and the officer on duty took pictures of the bruises. My dog was severely traumatized, and so was I. Mandy didn't eat for three days. I hope I never see a pit bull again. I did some research on pit bulls. In two thousand and sixteen, ninety-one percent of dog attack disfigurements were due to pit bull maulings. One ended in the death of a child. Pit bulls are banned in Britain, and they should be banned in Anamosa. Please ban this breed in Anamosa. Your child or grandchild may be next." Again, this was a letter or a notation that I'd received just prior to this meeting.
I would like to know if we could table this third reading until the next meeting. I had had some time to visit with Travis, visit with Jacob, visit with Cody, visit with Rod, and I was in get ahold of you three over the weekend. And it just got away from me. But I think, I feel like our community is divided. We have equal amount of people who want us to leave the ban the way it is and keep it in place. And we have half the community that would like to see it lifted. I would like, in the next two weeks, and Jacob has had some suggestions on, um, taking what we already have for our, um, if I can find it now, for our aggressive dog ordinance. And we can, like, really make this pretty stiff. And at the same time, if we were to release, pass this third reading, we can enact, um, a strict dog protective and control ordinance together, like, we could vote on one and then vote on the other. And then that, I see that as a possible compromise.
You had some dealings with this in your last community, correct?
Yep. Um, we did have a pit bull ban that we took away, but we also strengthened our dangerous dog ordinance and required that pit bulls be registered separate from, I mean, all dogs had to be registered, but pit bulls were regi- registered specifically, um, as dangerous dogs, even if, even if they had not attacked a person. They had extra restrictions on them, um, because we were aware that there's, there's more, uh, damage that is done if, if they do attack somebody. And that's just the approach we took. We kind of felt that we're in between measure, and we could kind of look at those things and discuss them if we'd like, kind of having specific air commands.
I'm willing to table this and do both same time.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to table this.
Until, give me a date. The next regular council meeting.
Next regular council meeting.
Is that, is that enough time to?
I think so.
Okay. I'll second that, then.
First by Betty, second by Rich to table this, so.
Okay, I just.
But I do have one question for Rod. This lady, if she filed the police report, do you know what the outcome was of that?
Rich, I had no knowledge of any of this.
Okay.
Until I, I read it. I did not even pre-read this before.
Well, I, I'm just curious what the outcome was after that fact of.
That would be a good action item, one that, yeah, I, I agree. Thinking the same thing, Rich. Wondered what followed up from it.
Yep.
Uh, I guess, in regard to the motion, uh, it's my understanding that being this proposed ordinance has been, in a sense, voted on twice. That the verbiage of the ordinance cannot be changed or amended. It, it has to carry to the third reading as it currently states. So, then, if there's.
I think we can still do that, Rod. And then.
It'll be a separate ordinance.
It'll be a separate ordinance.
So, we'll either shore up our vicious animal ordinance, or we will, in a sense, recreate a new ordinance for the one that's pending.
And I didn't know if this ordinance here, the one that in September was passed, would be the one we could do get that name?
I'm guessing that's.
Is the one we could change this name?
Is there anything I don't know concerning Nancy's saying of somebody coming in, just start breeding them? Is there anything the ordinance do control that people don't come in and just start doing this because they can't do it here and get so many more? I'm concerned about that, too, that we could get overloaded.
Well, you could enact a thing where if they're going to do breeding, they have to register. Or you can say, we could say that, um, all dogs have to be altered in some fashion so that they cannot be bred.
We have something. One of our ordinance I looked at is about you can't have, um, you can't have a puppy male or breeding in, in city limits. Is that correct? Is there?
She's walking.
Um, as of right now, today, as of this minute, until the third reading, having a pit bull in town still is against the ordinance.
Yes.
So, those that have them are breaking the ordinance.
I, I seen one walking today. Sure, the characteristics of one, I don't know what it was. They had it on a leash, but it sure looked like it.
Is, Jacob, I mean, beans, we're sitting here with a third reading in front of us. Uh, is, can this be tabled?
I, I talked with David. We can table it.
We can.
Um, it doesn't have to be, we can second the meetings, but, uh, yeah, it could be as long as we provide, notice of when we discuss any again.
Okay.
The motion was for next regular meeting.
There's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits separate number of animals.
I guess I would ask.
Nothing to do with breeding. It just says that.
As, as we.
Anything that would create an unsanitary or unhealthy environment. So, it's not number of breeding.
As we move forward with, you know, I, in a sense, revising the ordinances, uh, I would ask that we do due diligence and cover as many of those items that would be hanging out there at that time. So, we, in a sense, can, can put this to bed and then enforce the ordinances that would be on the books. Uh, I also asked Jacob that when we review this, from what I can tell of the ordinances, there's nothing that states about, uh, unprovoked or provoked bites. Uh, if, uh, it just, if, if we have a one bite rule, uh, and that occurs because someone jumped into your backyard where your fenced-in dog was and got bit, to me, that would be considered a provoked bite. And, and I would prefer it be clearly defined and not left to anybody's interpretation.
Yep.
Was provoked. All right, so obviously, it's, it's covered. I do not remember seeing that.
If you used your old ordinance book, it wouldn't have the one from September, right?
I had to look for a long time for this.
Um, I would revote that just for clarification as it's related to an ordinance ruling. That makes sense?
What are you shaking your head about here?
We're just.
Before you vote, I'd like a discussion. Is that not possible? This is an agenda item. You're just about ready to vote. Can I, can I make a discussion here?
Please do.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Dearborn, four oh five North Division. I don't have a dog in this fight. Sorry, I, I had to say that. But I'm not here to defend either side, although I do have an opinion on it, but I'm not gonna, that's not why I'm standing here. Just so everybody here is clear, what you're voting on here and what you just talked about. Are you talking about upgrading the existing, uh, ordinance for vicious dogs before the third reading? So that that is more information for you all to vote on next meeting? Is that what you're all actually voting on?
No, we're, we're voting to table getting rid of the court, the current ordinance.
You're voting to table the.
And how we're table that until the next city council meeting. And then, on a separate issue, we're also going to work on what we already have for, um, amending the protective and control ordinance of animals.
Understood. Is that gonna come before, on the next agenda? Is it gonna come before the third reading so that you have more informed?
I would like for it to.
I mean, that makes sense, right?
Yes.
Because those of you who have an opinion on the third reading, and evidently, that's why you're tabling it, because you want the chance to upgrade the existing ordinance. Wouldn't you put that forward first so that you all can move forward with the?
Third reading.
Third reading to either abolish or not abolish the breed? Does that make sense, Mr. Mayor?
The only issue with that, and that, I mean, it could work, but if we put it before, and there's language in referring to pit bulls legally, and then for whatever reason, they decide they don't want to pass the third reading, then it would be conflicting to refer to pit bulls in a legal sense when they're not. That'd be the only issue.
Yeah, with coming before the chicken or the egg, because you know, I mean, the same deal.
So, we might have to put that third reading out a little farther for this one.
No.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you guys can see, you can obviously read in your packet what the context of that proposed ordinance would be. It just may come in the agenda afterwards so that you, you really do, in my mind, you have to decide if you are going to legalize pit bulls.
Right.
Before you regulate that.
You need to, you need to.
Do the third reading first.
Know what your objection, or your, why are you doing it? I mean, are you doing it to avoid the third reading or to enhance it?
Neither.
So, what, what are you all thinking? Mr. Mayor, you're awful quiet about this. Do you, do you agree with?
What I mean.
Excuse me, excuse me. Do you think we should do the third reading after this ordinance change or, or, uh, not the change, but at least the discussion on it? Because it does pertain to it, correct?
Yeah. Well, we can.
I would like to answer that because it was my.
I, I'll let you answer. I, I've got the floor right now, and I give it to the mayor. I'd like his answer.
It's whatever the council decides they wanna do with the ordinance. They're the ones that decide.
Right, but do you, are you, are you following on this? Because you may need to vote on it.
I'm following it.
All right, so what do, what's your opinion on it? I've heard others. I wanna know your opinion.
Can he ask that? Because is that not like?
Oh, I'm asking opinion.
I understand, but if we all talk about what our opinions are, then aren't we, like, lining up folks ahead of time? Are you asking which way you would vote?
Were you just about to give me your opinion just now when you interrupted me?
No, I'm about to tell you why we put the third reading for next week. Was that not your question?
No, I know why you're putting it, but I'm just wondering what order you're gonna put it in, on the agenda. And I, I'm pretty sure that the rest are curious about that, too. If they're really thinking ahead here.
So.
Speak out of turn.
No.
He has to finish first.
He has to finish.
I, I'm actually done. I just put that out for you to.
Are you gonna answer Betty's question?
What, what's your question?
I didn't have a question.
Did you give me an actual question?
No, I didn't have a question.
She didn't have a question.
All right.
I have no question for you today.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
May I speak now?
Well, the young lady over here, who just disappeared to us.
Kim Kirk, three oh six seven Cleveland Street, and I have something to present, and I don't wanna step on any toes. My question is, I understand you wanna table it for many reasons, and you don't wanna state your opinion. Nobody else wants to state their opinion right now. You wanna do this right, and I get that. Thank you. Are we allowed to, tonight, to present so that that will give you something to tape, to table? Um, the only reason I say that is I think people are coming prepared. Some people have difficulties getting here. Um, and are we presenting tonight or not? That's my only question. I know you're not gonna vote on it or do anything about it, but I'm just wondering if you can hear what we have to say. And then, basically, when you come back the next time, maybe you would not, I'm not saying you wouldn't have other speakers, but maybe you would hear the majority of it tonight because I thought it was gonna be.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna sit down and take my turn, um, and then, when, when, are we up now? Can we?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I was gonna kind of hear a different, let you hear a different view, but since I'm here. Um, I'm not going to give you any statistics tonight because I think Tammy and Nancy have covered that very well. I just wanted to tell you about my experiences with pit bulls. Thirty years ago, I participated in a deposition of a doctor who was the head of the otolaryngology department and a plastic surgeon at the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics. The deposition was about a little two-year-old boy sitting on his front porch with his mother when the neighbor's pit bull came out of his house and ran across the street and viciously attacked the little toddler. The mother, who was sitting right next to the toddler, was screaming and tried desperately beating off the dog, but the dog would not release its hold on the child. A neighbor ran over and turned the water hose on the dog, and the dog finally ran off. The dog ate off the child's nose and ear and mauled three of his fingers. The little boy fought for his life and endured multiple surgeries. His face was never the same. The lawsuit was for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Fifteen years ago, our daughter's first pony was at my brother-in-law's apple orchard when three neighbor dogs savagely attacked, attacked our pony and almost had her completely down on the ground when our sister-in-law went outside, and the dogs turned their attention on her. She retreated into her house and called my husband. He called the Monty vet, and I called Sheriff Mark Denniston. Deputy Ivan Eden went to the farmhouse where the dogs lived, and the dogs tried to attack him. Ivan maced them, and one of them kept charging him. Ivan ran back to his patrol car and drove to where our horse and my husband was. Ivan went back later to talk to the dog's owner, and the dogs were not there. I talked to Denniston again and told him he needed to find the dogs and that the vet was treating our horse, and my husband was standing by to make sure that the dogs did not return. Denniston told me that my husband could shoot the dogs if they came back. I told Denniston that it was Denniston's job to shoot the dogs, not my husband's. Mark Denniston and I stayed in phone contact throughout the day about the whereabouts of the dogs. Finally, Denniston called me and told me that he had spoken to the dog's owner, and the owner said that he moved the dogs. I was not satisfied with that and told him that the dogs were vicious and had almost killed our horse and would have surely done so if our sister-in-law had not distracted them. And then they re, and then they turned around and attacked her. She said she was scared for her life. Finally, at eleven thirty P M. that night, over eight hours later, Denniston called me and told me that he had the three dogs and was taking them out to Brian Darrow and asked if I wanted to watch the dogs go into the clinic. I went out to the clinic and from my car, watched the dogs being taken into the clinic. The next morning, Mark Denniston called me at work and said that the two bit, pit bulls were put down, but that Brian said the Beagle appeared to be a nice dog and was acting in a pack and would probably not be a vicious dog if he had not been running with the pit bulls. And Brian wanted to know if I wanted the Beagle put down. I said I did not want the Beagle put down and that I respected Brian's judgment. That day at school, my daughter was taunted and called a dog killer the dog owner's daughter, which was obviously very hurtful to my daughter. When the county attorney at the time, Connie Rickles, heard about the incident, she asked me to go to the county board of supervisors and tell my story. She wanted the supervisors to ban pit bulls in the county. I went to them and told my story. I took them ordinances that were enacted in other jurisdictions. They voted and did not approve the ban for the county. Just a few months later, a local high school girl was attacked on her own farm by a neighbor's pit bull. I subsequently saw Keith Dirks, one of the supervisors downtown, and he approached me and said he was so sorry about our horse, and he thanked me for speaking to the supervisors and said that he wanted to vote for the ban, but he knew how the other supervisors felt about their dogs, and they would never approve it. I told him if the pit bull ban had passed, the recent attack on the high school girl would not have happened. He felt terrible and agreed with me. Four years ago, on Easter weekend, I was walking with a six-year-old girl and our mini Australian shepherd. My dog was on a leash. We were two blocks from our home. A young couple were outside doing lawn work in their front yard, and their dog was chained up near them in the front yard. When we went by on the other side of the street, the dog growled and barked ferociously and ran to the end of his chain. The dog's owners yelled at their dog to be quiet and go to the front porch. The dog broke his chain and ran at us. I picked up the little girl and ran for a neighbor's home. I put the little girl between me and the door, picked up my dog at chest level and pounded on their door. No one answered. The vicious dog was now two feet away from us, and I was just waiting for its teeth to sink into my leg, stomach, or my dog. I was screaming. The little girl was crying. The dog's owner ran up to us to grab his dog, and his dog ran off. A man in the utility work van was driving by, and I stopped him. He followed us home. As we were half a block from my house, the dog came ferociously barking and charging us from between the neighbors' houses with his owner running after him and yelling. We ran the rest of the block and barely got in our front door as the dog was running onto our front porch. The dog ran around to our backyard, and his owner tried to catch him, but the dog wouldn't come to him. I put meat out on our sidewalk, and the owner finally grabbed his dog. I put meat out on our sidewalk, and the owner finally grabbed his dog, and leashed him with the heavy chain. I went outside and talked to the owner, and took pictures of the dog and his owner, the, pardon me. The owner was very apologetic, he said that the dog was an American pit bull, and that the dog had his shots, and was a good family dog, and that they had a young toddler, and never had any incident with the dog and her. I told him about the deposition I was involved in, where the pit bull mauled the two-year-old little boy's face off. And I said, because of the incident that I just experienced, that he was a vicious dog, and that I feared for my life, and the life of the little girl with me, and my dog. I suggested that he never allow that dog to be around his daughter. I contacted the police, they came to my home, and I gave them the dog's and owner's information. The officer said that there was one other note in the file for the same dog. He said that previously, Simonson drove by the home, saw the dog chained up out front, and noted the dog breed and his address in the file, and did nothing about it. In summary of the three incidents that personally involved me with pit bulls, the first incident with the little boy, who is now in his early thirties, lost his nose, ear, parted his fingers, and had multiple massive facial reconstruction surgeries because of an unprovoked pit bull attack. The city of Anamosa doesn't have enough money to pay that kind of lawsuit settlement. In the second incident, which was another unprovoked two pit bulls attack on our family's pet, the county supervisors chose not to enact a pit bull ban at that time, and just months later, a local high school girl was viciously attacked by a pit bull on her own farm. And the third incident involving myself and an unprovoked American pit bull attack fortunately did not result in any injuries other than extreme fear and reluctance to go for walks around town. The police chose to do nothing about it when they first noted the pit bull living in the city of Anamosa, when there was a ban in effect. How can we ever feel protected if there is no ban on these vicious dogs? Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Was it my turn, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
John's turn.
I'll be very brief, my name is John Ely, I live at three zero one North Davis Street. I heard something that Betty said, and I hope I misunderstood it, and Jacob, you probably know the answer to this. There is an Iowa Opens Meetings law, that says that, um, the council, for most things, have to meet together as a group, and anytime a majority meets, and it is not an open meeting, that is violating the law. And the courts have ruled, you can't have a, one person go around to each other at council meeting, uh, and still be legal. At least, that's my understanding, there was a county that did that, uh, within the last two years. I don't know if anybody read that case, don't remember the county, and I can't even remember the, the place you check. But the lady's name is Margaret Johnson, and she is the attorney, and Andy McKean, who lives just outside of town, uh, was a member of the directing board until just recently, so be very, very careful. That's all.
That is correct, we cannot make decisions, but we can pass information on to each other. It's no different than you sending us an email.
Chris Collins, five oh seven East First Street. Mr. Sharon, I don't, I've never met you before, but I'm the guy that started, uh, asked the council to hear this in the beginning. Uh, the reason is, I have a mixed breed dog, who's an emotional support animal. For six months, I've been trying to give a letter from a licensed therapist to the city, starting with Mayor Barnes, and then Tammy, and any council member that would hear me. Are you familiar with emotional support animals?
Yes.
The law is surrounding, can you own an emotional support animal in the city of Anamosa? Regardless of breed?
Emotional support animals are different than, uh.
Correct, and they're covered under F H A. Because to answer.
So, so the, the F H A does not apply to the city as a whole, it applies to a housing person, so.
Right. Yep, and the city.
So, no, the, yeah, short answer would be that, no, an emotional support animal is not exempt from the pit bull ban.
Okay, even though the city attorney said it was last week, and federal law says it is.
I, I'm, I don't believe he said that, but I, I don't think it is.
He did. He did. Um, and he also said that the current law is unconstitutionally vague, um, because in Iowa, emotional support animals are covered by the Iowa Constitution, and, uh, federal government, um, and that's kind of beside the point, I've just honestly been trying to give a letter to whoever I can, and then nobody won't, nobody has a path for that. Um, actually Sergeant McNally, or is it Chief McNally now, in terms, just Sergeant McNally, um, was awesome, and actually spoke to me twice. And I told him, I said, hey, if you want to come look at my dog, you can, you can cite me, whatever you want to do, it's fine. Um, I've, the, uh, Doctor Darrell, Brian Darrell, came and spoke, who is the most, probably the most, um, well-known person in animals, is that safe to say, one of them? Um, expert on animals, he's been a vet forever, and I asked him two questions, uh, does this law work? And are pit bulls more aggressive than any other breed? And he said no. So there's other breeds that he worries about. I could sit up here and show you all kinds of fluffy, cute pit bulls, okay? They're not the strongest dog, their bite is ninth. Um, I don't think anybody wants backyard breeders, I don't think anybody wants, um, dog fighting dogs, or social status dogs, um, guard dogs. Um, and I would probably argue that the people that are using dogs for that are probably engaged in other criminal activity, that's probably a lot more detrimental to a city as a whole, um, than just the specific dog itself. I don't think anybody's under the impression that this law's been enforced for the last, however long. The most notable fatality in, around this area's been in Monticello, it was two rottweilers. So are we gonna start banning, like Mr. Crump said at last meeting, are we gonna start banning other breeds? Um, or do we want to do away with every dog over fifty pounds, forty pounds? Where do you guys want to cut it off? If you guys want, I think everybody in this room doesn't want dogs running at large, or aggressive dogs, or vicious dogs, I don't think anybody wants it, is there anybody? Any of you that wants that? That's not what we want. We just want to be able to go to a humane society, or wherever, and get a dog, and not have to worry that if a dog looks a certain way, it's gonna be classified as a pit bull and taken away. There's absolutely no credible source that says these work, or are effective. I emailed all six of the council members a, um. A tool that would estimate the cost of enforcing this law, and it was about eighty-five hundred dollars a year. Um, probably not, that's probably a low end, given that there's currently over, at least a hundred pit bulls currently in Anamosa. Um, that if, if you guys have a plan to eradicate them, that's gonna be kind of costly, then, um. You know, that kind of falls, falls, I don't think anybody's purposely avoiding breaking laws, or not wanting to break laws, I don't even think half the, half the town knows that you have to register your dogs. And I brought it to your ten, you guys' attention last week, it's kind of a hard thing, if you work nine to five, you can't get into the police station to do it, it's hard to do. So, you know, you guys at the last couple meetings have been asking, kind of asking for second chances, uh, because of previous people that have kind of made the city look bad. And I think animal owners are just looking for a first chance, and you guys trust the citizens to, um, be responsible, and not just ban a certain breed. But I would, I think you guys are on the right track, I think the laws are probably all roughly thirty years old, and they're pretty vague. Animal, they're called unsatisfactory, the breeding laws, so I think it would be a great idea to strengthen those, and avoid some of the stuff you guys are worried about, but I don't think that banning a breed's effective, and I don't think there's been anything that proves that that would be effective.
Kelly Day, one ten West Walnut Street. And I want to make a comment about the letter that was given to you just before the meeting, I noticed there was a stat on there, about ninety-one percent, but there was no source, and I was kind of questioning where that source came from, because I've never seen it anywhere on the website. Um, secondly, if we want to start banning dogs that have caused fatalities, guess what? We're gonna have to ban dachshunds, and we're gonna have to ban yorkies, too, because there's been two dachshunds and one yorkie that killed people. So, I mean, do you want to put a forty-pound weight limit? What do you want to do? I mean, if you start with pit bulls, then you're gonna have, okay, well, what about this, it's in the media, maybe this German shepherd. Okay, now we're gonna ban German shepherds? But you're never gonna see where a yorkie mauled somebody, and it's not sensational. But that's what I'm saying, is if you're gonna look at maulings, you need to look at all the breeds, there's twenty-five of them out there that account for those statistics.
Tony Ellis, five oh five East First Street. I sent an email out to all you council members, um, I know I got a response back from Rod, and I said, I won't bother you guys very often, um, and I know you're all busy, as was stated before. Um, I used to work in the healthcare profession, I've seen what pit bulls can do, don't get me wrong, I've also seen what cats can do, not to be an ass, I've seen what people can do, if you get bit, it's not pleasant. Um, and people can be deceiving, as I would hope that the city council would know, recently with the, um, things that have happened. People that we think are nice people in general have a lot of things said about them later on. I simply ask that you guys just consider that looks are deceiving, no matter if it's a pit bull running around. What I think looks like a pit bull might be somebody else's different dog, might not be a different breed, might be a mixed breed. Um, I just know that I could pull lots of people in here and say to you, are you scared of pit bulls? And they say, yes, I'm very scared of pit bulls, and I can pull somebody in that says, are you scared of chihuahuas? And people are gonna go, oh, yes. So you're gonna find somebody everywhere that's scared of something different, no matter what dog it is. I own dogs, I will have them registered, because I did not know that they needed to be registered until this came up, I agree with Chris, I was never told. Um, I trust my dogs, don't get me wrong, I own German shepherd, or German shorthairs. Do I trust them for you? Nope, because if I did, I'd be crazy. That's setting myself up for a lawsuit to say, nope, you're fine, take my dog. That, that's not, that, that would be any person's dog, if you own a chihuahua, if you own a dachshund, if you own a pit bull, for me to say to you, yep, my dog's the friendliest dog in the world, well, it's always friendly until the first bite, no matter whose it is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Hubbard, one ten West Walnut Street. So I've volunteered with Animal Welfare Friends for the last eleven years, worked with many dogs, fostered dogs, cared for dogs, medicated dogs. I've worked and volunteered with Alpha House Canines, they do, they've done boarding in the past, but they do obedience training, and patrol dog training, and narcotic dog training. With doing that, I've worked with so many dogs, I mean, I, I currently dog sit, I have three clients, and I have eighteen dogs that I dog sit for. These dogs, you can't trust a single one of them, it doesn't matter whether it's a pit bull, it doesn't matter whether it's a chihuahua, it doesn't matter whether it's a German shepherd, what breed it is. Any dog can bite you, any dog can do damage, if you're talking about serious damage, the current Jones County Police Dog, Patrol Dog, Loki, I've worked with Loki. I don't know if anybody's ever taken a hit from a dog, but let me tell you, it's really painful. And depending on the dog and the dog breed, I know Robin had a dog that he used, uh, Robin Alpha House Canines had a dog he used at Coralville, with his employment there, and that dog hits extremely hard, you are a hundred feet away, and you hear that dog hit him, and that is not a pit bull, Belgian mountain lion. Similar to German shepherd, but let me tell you, that is one dog I would never want to take a hit from, ever, if you had a choice. So, and seeing like videos and stuff in those dogs, and let me tell you, that dog will do the same thing, he's trained to do that, he's trained to grab, he's trained to hold on, and not let go, and the officer or the dog trainer, it's their job to teach them to let go. So, me looking at those videos, I see somebody's trained that dog to do that, they've trained them to be like that, and that's inappropriate, that's poor dog ownerships.
Thank you.
There's a motion before us in a second. I'm not really sure. The changes to the ordinance as we move forward are gonna be related to this. I just, I'm not convinced or see any reason why we need to table what's in front of us, this can be either adopted or denied, and we can still move forward with shoring up our vicious dog, or vicious animal ordinances.
The reason I thought we should table it is because we obviously have a house divided, and I felt like if this current ordinance was gonna be lifted, the ban on pit bulls, the very same night, we could implement a stricter, no sense, aggressive dog ordinance, and that, rather than lifting the ban on pit bulls, and then later tightening up that ordinance, if it was both done at the same time, it would be a compromise on those sides.
I understand.
Ready to vote?
On Betty's motion.
To table them.
Motion to table to the next regular council meeting, which is one oh six. John.
Yes.
Rod.
No.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Hey.
Yes.
Six point two, discussion impossible, action on resolution establishing and adopting guidelines for public participation at city council meetings.
So I guess I'd like to address this, and Tammy put this together, I think she did a really good job, uh, my only comment would be, I, I don't think it's necessary to have full appointment number three. Currently, that will address, uh, what we have at the end of our agenda, which is, just public business that's not otherwise addressed, and I guess I don't feel if that's fair to the council or the public. If someone's free to speak, I think it either needs to be on a, a topic that's on the agenda, not only for us, but for the public to be able to address that same topic at that meeting.
Excuse me, can you speak up?
Sorry, I, I think, uh, if, if someone's going to address a topic at the council, um, it needs to be on the agenda, what that topic is, so that the, everybody has an opportunity to respond. Um, if they come to the council about a topic that's not on the agenda, and you have something to say about it, you would have no idea that you need to attend that meeting. And so that's why I don't, I don't think it's productive for the, the, the public to have that business with the council that's not on the agenda, that's just my opinion.
So you're sa, let me get this right then, you're saying then that you do not feel that we, in this case, we should have item twelve point zero? On the agenda, at all?
Correct, yeah. It's my feeling, not that it has to wait for the council to decide, but, again, it, it, it limits the ability for the public to respond. If, uh, I'm coming to complain about you, Rich, and you have no idea that I'm doing that, I kind of put you in a bad spot, because you, you would have no way to know that that's happening.
I see what you're saying, but I feel that they, the public should have an opportunity to have, maybe they have an item that they want put on the agenda to at least quickly discuss. Um, but with that being said, I think it needs to be a concise discussion, not forty-five minutes, or an hour, or whatever, it could just be, hey, here's five minutes, ten minutes, here's what I feel, can you guys address this at your next meeting, or something to that effect?
Sure.
That's just my, my thinking.
That's kind of how I feel twelve point O should be.
Yep.
You know, if you.
Sometimes it's as simple as, the streets weren't cloud efficient, or things like that, is what people.
Yeah, and I, I, it's just my recommendation that some of those things probably need to be handled administratively.
I agree with that, I think.
I, I agree with that, but I, I. I, I agree with that, but I, I don't know that I wanna go to the point of silencing the public completely.
Right, and-
I would like to put limitations on that, though, like, everybody has a timeframe to use. Once they get up and speak, we decide, let's put it on the next agenda, or pass it off to Tammy or Jacob or whoever to, to deal with it. It doesn't need to be an action item on the next agenda.
And my feeling on this is, is if we say you get five minutes, it's not, if you want more than that time, you can come and present and have more time for presenting. But if it's just gonna be at that meeting, here's my five minutes, or whatever. Because part of the problem is, throughout all of this, since I've been on the council anyway, sometimes somebody gets five minutes, next week somebody may get a half hour, but the person who had the five minutes gets cut off. The person who has the half hour continues on, so I think there needs to be consistency. And everybody gets their time.
Could twelve point O be reworded so that it would refer to new items? That haven't been previously discussed?
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what's saying-
I know that's what it infers, but that isn't specifically what it says, and a couple of times we've discussed something, an agenda item, and then somebody's talked about it under twelve point O, and by then it's kind of, their input isn't, doesn't make a difference, because we've already voted.
That's what that resolution, I think, clarifies, though, is kind of your mindset, or just like today. You have six point one on the third reading. You wanna talk about it, do it now. That's what the mayor reported.
And I think part of maybe twelve point O could be-
If you wanna talk, go out in the lobby, okay? You're disrupting the meeting.
Sorry, I apologize.
I think twelve point O could also be a situation where if somebody addresses something, somebody says, I don't know, I don't like how the streets were powed, that once that item's been addressed, do we want seven people to tell us they don't like how the streets have been paved? Can it be that maybe we limit it to if you have something new to say, as opposed to repeating it? For twelve point O?
Yeah, that's what it says. It says on three, it says the mayor may impose the same limits of time and point of information as stated in number two, which says, the mayor says, don't re, don't reiterate the same point of information.
So do we want the same time limit on twelve point O as we do on each action item?
I think it would just be easier for everybody to understand that they have the same time everywhere.
I mean, it, it does say, it does say he may impose the same limits of time and point of, so. The only thing that is not a part of this is something that Rod brought up, I believe, about if somebody does a presentation, can somebody then follow up at the podium? And that may be something we need to address, too.
And maybe that should be something that whoever's giving the presentation wants to be open to questions as well.
I know in the past and in other communities, they say that when people are at the podium, they're to address the council and the council only. That the public is not part of the person addressing the council. So at the event that person is gone, and there would be a question or something after the fact, I think the sitting in the chairs and yelling up to the podium and then sidebar conversations going on and whispering about complaining about who our mayor is and all this stuff that happens in the room kinda creates a lot of shiny objects. So-
What happens if you change twelve point O to say, public business with the council on item, on action items, not on the agenda? So that if somebody has a response to a presentation, they could still come under twelve point O, not, might, maybe right at the same time, but if John had something to add to that, because it's not an action item, it's just a presentation.
So you're saying non-action items?
Yeah.
Because most of the time the-
You're not, you're not in conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So most of the time the presentation is just presentation, we later act on it, so they can comment later when we're acting, not during the presentation.
Right. So you could clarify it.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Because it's somewhat unfair to the people who do ask to be put on agenda and want to give a presentation, and then they give their presentation, and because they've done that, now we've opened it up to everybody to get up and comment on their presentation. I think that during presentation, maybe no comments at all. And then down in the action items, they can comment.
Can, can I just throw this item at you, though? Let's say we've got somebody coming up to do a presentation that's not an action item at this point in time, but they're talking about, say, the sewer project or something like that, and it's set as a presentation. It may affect John on his street. Are we going to, say, keep Lindsay around until the very end to have answered John's question about that presentation item? Or is he going to be allowed at that point in time to say, "Hey, this is affecting my street, what are, what are we looking at?" You know, I guess that's another thing that we have to look at, too, if we're just going presentations and limiting them.
Well, I think there's a difference between allowing somebody to have to present for a question versus making their own presentation, so.
Well, so that, therefore, we've got to at least allow some commentary.
Maybe only questions, not statements or opinions.
Right. Maybe clarification of some items or something of that nature.
I would really like to see us institute parliamentary procedure, parliamentary order to these meetings, because I do not believe it's currently being done. As far as twelve point O on current agenda, I was in favor of putting that in there. Time limitations. I don't wanna be here till midnight, but if that's what's required of me, I certainly will be. Some people can present, whether it's an item, act, or an agenda item or not an agenda item, in three to five minutes. Some people may take fifteen minutes to a half an hour. I'm not gonna, I do not wanna be dismissive and allow them that opportunity to do that. But with parliamentary order comes you present to the council, to the mayor, to the city administrator. If there was be follow-up activity, or not follow-up, but, uh, public comments, as in four point three on our current agenda, I'd be in favor of listening to the public opinion. Uh, but they address the council. They don't address the presenter. If they have a question for the presenter or for someone else, parliamentary order, they get that permission from the mayor. Or if the council wants to say, "I wanna hear that question." Also, we really need to get parliamentary order because of the sidebar talking that's going on. That, that should just not be permitted, period. This is a, a meeting of parliamentary, it's not just your local chapters meeting. There, there needs to be order from start to finish. Professionalism should be conducted by those presenting or inquiring. And also, questions should not be directed from one public member to the other. Polls, raise your hand if you're in favor. That does not occur in parliamentary order. It should not occur in this chamber. I do wanna hear the public's opinion, but I also do not want to subject presenters and other public members to debate and attack. So if what I've mentioned is covered in items one through four, we're good to go, but I do not believe they are.
So what do you want changed in that?
We, I believe we need to address what the presenters, presenter presents to the council. They do not present to the public. If the public wants to follow up with statements, they make those to the council. If the question, if they would prefer, would like to direct a question to the presenter, in a sense, they get permission to do that.
Under number two, maybe there should be some discussion amongst council before we open it up to the public.
If the council can, in our discussion, answer some of the public's questions, it could. I agree. I agree, yes. I, that's a good idea, Cody. And then do we want to also say where it says, the mayor may limit their time to five minutes? Do we, Rich, to create consistency, do we wanna say there will be a five minute limit? I know Dina in Monticello hit a little, like, timing, but she said.
Is the, is the time limit the, the critical key to the component?
Well, unless you don't want consistency, I mean-
Well, on that side, the, the presenters, I usually let them go through with-
They're the presenters.
Yeah, they're the presenters, they get more time.
And they ask to be on the agenda, so they, they followed some of those steps. But if you're getting to some of those others, you know, there's a lot of places that you get your five minutes, and once you've used your five minutes, you're done. You can't go sit down and then come back up.
Correct.
One, one-
One shot and you're done.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, if you use two minutes, you can come back up and finish your three.
There you go, and I, I don't, I don't wanna dissect this over minutes.
Well, and-
I understand, you know-
But I, I'm just saying, you, you need to have some consistency here. Because I've, I've seen guys get up and get shoved off at, you know, before they even get to say anything. And then, like I said, we've seen people stand up here for thirty minutes, forty minutes, an hour almost. So, is it fair to one individual to get shut down at maybe not even five, and then allow somebody else to go longer?
Well, and if people know you're maxing at five and you're done, they'll get to the point instead of adding all the-
And, and that's just it, a lot of things can be done within five minutes.
I agree.
I think-
The three to five would, would cover it. Yeah, I'm, it's more frustrating, and the terminology I'm using probably isn't good. But when you have five people come up to the podium in, whether it be in twelve point O or in a follow-up to an action item, and they say the same exact thing.
But see, that's where-
Parliamentary procedure does not permit that. You must speak of something new on topic.
But that's where this gives the mayor the chance to shut him down and say, "We've already heard this, do you have something new to present?"
I'm good with the five minutes.
I'm good with the five minutes.
I think, I think anything can be said in five minutes. If, if you're not on the agenda, you just wanna get up and say something.
And truthfully, if it's something that somebody believes deeply in, that they need that much time, unless it's, unless it came up over the weekend, they're going to be able to get on as a presenter and have more time.
They could always ask for you to table it, because they have more information they wanna provide.
Or they can put it in writing for the next agenda here as a presentation.
What you're saying, Rich, is presenters would be exempt from the time limitations?
They would have more time.
That's how it's written currently.
Yes.
So do you wanna change in section two, the mayor will limit their time to five minutes and will also limit, not may, will, and will also limit the address-
Yes.
Yeah.
Point of information has already been identified by another citizen.
Yes.
Sounds good.
I mean, everybody sees the agenda or has the opportunity days before we get here. So they would have the opportunity to come up with a good question or a good statement before then.
The only, the only, just in, for a point of reference, I think in previous discussions, when someone was presenting to the council, they were getting, the council was asking questions, so it extended that, so, and I think the response was, when, I think, I can't remember who it was presented, said, "I just wanna present, do my five minutes, and then you can ask me questions." So they did their whole point in five minutes, so just on the consideration on the council side, not to extend that, so we don't get into that. Wait a minute, we had a minute of council and a minute of-
Well, and I'd like to see it changed to exactly what Cody said, that once, once the council has-
The first and second.
And talked about it.
Council discussion first.
Council discussion first before public discussion.
So it needs to be motion, second, council discussion, public input, vote.
Well, then, let me just say-
We've talked about this in the past, and to me, it just doesn't, it does not make sense to me to institute a motion and a second and then have discussion. Because the discussion, whether it's council or public, could possibly drive the motion. So why don't we permit discussion? Now, it, no, no, it doesn't. Rod, we're trying to reinvent the wheel, and Robert's Rules of Order already apply. And it is allowed in Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, even if we have the motion and a second, the person who made the motion can always come back and amend their motion.
I'm okay with doing a first and second, and then council discussion, then public discussion. That way, if it means we discuss it, and then, then we can amend our motion.
Well, and we can, we can go council discussion, public discussion, council discussion again, based upon something that we heard, and then make our, our decision.
You can always vote it down, and whoever votes it down can bring it back later.
There's, there's, you got three options. You go ahead and vote, put it, pass it, you can amend it, and then vote on it, or you can vote it down. And if, and theoretically, if you don't have a first and a second, then the motion dies for lack of a first and second.
Do you also wanna change number three, or the last sentence? Number two about the mayor will impose the same time limit and point of information? So they're both close bonding?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it consistent through the whole thing.
It needs to be consistent.
In five minutes, we'll know whether we need to put it on an agenda or if it's just an administrative item or, or something that can be taken the other way.
Any input from you, Jacob?
I, I mean, I, I think we're on the right track, or I, I, I guess I, I share what I think. It's good that we're saying rules, and you know, we, we know a question worth asking, we've been up.
Discussion started before first and second was made, so really, if we just-
Do you just wanna make those changes and bring it back?
I think so. We've made, we've discussed enough that, you know, if there's just one change, that'd be fine, but I think we've got enough changes that we need to be clear on what it says.
Oh, so?
Yep.
So Jacob, I'm going to be revising.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Are you still on six point two?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's gonna be tabled, so, come back with the revision.
Discussion, no possible action, we're gonna have it next week, the changes made. Thanks.
Not next week, two weeks.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
All right.
Is there any public input?
Yes.
Yeah, I do. Randy Day through Four South Oak Street in Amosah. I remember when you guys adopted this, and I thought it was great, because it's really hard for a citizen to get ahold of each individual council person, and for us to be able to come up here and to address everybody is pretty important. And I think you saw that, or heard about it tonight, when I think John sent out emails and only got answers from a few. Didn't even get acknowledgement that people read his email. So, I appreciate you guys doing this, keeping it. I think it's all a matter of enforcement. I know, um, when I first started coming here, I got three months. Some people got more. I think it all depended on whether a certain person liked what he was hearing, and that rests on the mayor.
Well, we adjusted it to five minutes.
Well, I, I think that's great, and I, I'm all for that. Five minutes, you're done. Thank you.
Then my question is.
Uh, you need to come up, identify yourself.
Okay, I'm Judy Rose, Tosek South Davis, and I was going to speak after you guys were done with your, during this public business with council on items not on the agenda. Unfortunately, I did not see what I, this was going to be on the agenda. So I'm not sure if I should speak now or wait until afterwards.
Is it for an agenda item, Judy?
Is it, is it pertaining to six point two?
Yes, it's pertaining to six point two.
Please, please do this time.
Okay, before I get started. Okay. I just want to say that I am in total agreement with the council putting a time limit for citizens with concerns. A few months ago, a few citizens were allowed plenty of time to crucify me during a city council meeting regarding my abrupt resignation from the city's Board of Adjustment. It seems that the city clerk failed to mention that I had resigned in September, but was asked to attend October's meeting so that they could have a quorum. Did not find out till the same day as the meeting that the two who had the majority of the information were not going to be at the meeting. That is why I tried to express my concerns, it was shut down, so I felt my only alternative was to resign immediately. So at the next meeting, the two who are absent can be in attendance. I believe it was at the same meeting that my name is brought up for consideration to be appointed to the city's planning and zoning board, and yes, I am a little disgusted for a number, which I had plenty of experience, serving on Springville's P and Z for a number of years, serving as chairperson for a period of time. Not only was I not appointed, the council gave a seat to a father of a council member, who has a history of being friends with a known member of the community that tends to outright ignore city ordinances. My qualifications were also questioned, even hinted that I might not have stated the truth on my resume. So I have a packet available for the council outlining my working relationship with Hillary Clinton, while I served as chair of the Jones County Democrats, Vice President Al Gore, along with Senator Tom Harkin, not to mention receiving a governor's volunteer award from Governor Tom Velsack. I also had the privilege to serve on Governor Velsack's ambassador program. Also served on a member of Lynn County Community Service Advisory Board. And one last item, I did receive my administration degree from Kirkland while earning a place on the dean's list each semester. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
All right, so six, two's done. Six point three, discussion and possible action on review process for the City of Animals Employee Personnel Policies.
I have your packet and email from Adrian that outlines the different proposals.
Could you speak a little louder?
Sure. The council has in their packet a email from Adrian outlining proposals from different, uh, organizations for the, uh, review of personnel policies. He has recommended the third proposal by, uh, Shuttleworth Ingersoll, and I would concur with his recommendations, but if you wanna discuss those three options there, uh, or have questions, I guess this is what we're discussing.
Was there a reason he picked Shuttleworth over Simmons Prime?
Well, I, I mean, I can't really get behind the, I don't know his rationale, um, but looking at, um, I think.
I know these three law firms personally, and they're all three really good ones. Um, the thing, the reason I thought Simmons Prime was that Brian Fagan, he is like a Cedar Rapids expert in employment law, like, that's all he does is Simmons Prime. We had talked about, when we talked about renewing, Adrian and I had suggested we go outside for a city attorney so that there wouldn't be a conflict, and Rich, you thought that if there were a conflict, we could get an outside attorney to handle things. I think if we renewed Simmons Prime, Brian Fagan would be, if he did this for the city of Cedar Rapids, then he might be the go-to when there be a conflict or they drink, like, that relationship would be done. That's what I thought.
So I, I don't know, um, any, any of these firms personally, I've moved out, but, um.
I like the way Shuttleworth broke down the sessions.
I, I think that, that was my point, and I, so I guess you could split the two services. We're, we're gonna be discussing the sensitive, sensitivity training, but I guess you could separate the two services if you wanted to. The reason I did, I love Shuttleworth Ingersoll was because of the, the way they structure their, their training. Uh, I think it's good that they have a different focus for the different levels of administration in the council. Diff- and that's different than Simmons Prime, but I, they have the same, I guess, hourly rate in terms of the review of the personnel policies, so.
They're all good attorneys, I know them all.
As I read Adrian's, uh, comments here, uh, with Shuttleworth and Ingersoll, he said they had the, he thought they had the best proposal.
That's what he says.
Yes. I'm not seeing a proposal.
Right, I, I have not had a proposal either.
That would be pertinent information to make this decision on. Uh, I get he, he probably captured some of the key points here and summarized it, but if they, these three entities were asked to submit proposals, I believe we should be viewing the proposals.
That's fair.
Can you get the three proposals?
I can ask for.
Well, I like the Simon, Simon's grind, because, Simmons' grind, because they break the council in half, so that can do it and not have a meeting.
I'm sure either one would do that if they asked.
Yeah, I don't know that that's necessarily a deal breaker on it, but, um, and I guess the que- you know, in answer to Rod's question about, um, a proposal, I don't see that, in reading this, that Adrian necessarily asked for a proposal, he just says he reached out to four law firms, and these are the three that responded with, "Here's our prices." So whether or not he actually officially said, "Give us in writing a proposal," or they just discussed it on the phone and this is it.
I understand, yeah.
We really don't know what they're gonna cover, since it's.
The, the two, you know, Simmons Prime and Shuttleworth Ingersoll, as the way, as I'm reading it, they're both coming in at two thousand dollars and charging two hundred and sixty dollars per hour. Again, without seeing a proposal or something spelled out, itemized, you know, is, is it gonna be two thousand dollars? And it'd be three hours each, or, you know, is it two thousand plus two hundred and sixty dollars for any hour over the one, one and a half that's spelled out?
It looks to me like the whole entire sensitivity training would be the two thousand dollars. The two hundred and sixty dollars an hour would be to review the personnel policy.
Right, but it also doesn't state if there's gonna be any travel time, any out-of-pocket expenses that need to be covered. Because I'm good, I'm betting they're not driving from Cedar Rapids to here to do anything for free, for that travel time.
Maybe, Rich, that's incorporated within their two thousand dollars.
Well, it might very well be, I don't know.
You know, as, as I read this, if this was a supplier soliciting business for me in the private sector, this is what they submitted, I'd probably kick it out, because there's no itemization and there's too much gray area here.
So now the, you, the two of the three, would you like to see a proposal from those two, since they're pretty much the same?
Well, and here's the other thing, you know, as far as Bradley goes, for the personnel policy review, they're only gonna charge a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, so, do they come into play maybe for the review of that? Or do you wanna stick with one place for the policy review and the training?
And, and this would be where it would be good to have a true proposal, perhaps a proposed not to exceed cost, because as, as Adrian, uh, talks about, he says, Shuttleworth thinks they can do it within, you know, a few hours, much less hours than maybe another, so, one fifteen hour, depends on how many hours it might take to do it.
Well, Bradley Riley, yes.
They have a not to exceed.
Yeah.
Rich, I would, I would prefer not to à la carte any of this training.
Yeah.
It's, it's just too significant.
Well, I'm not saying the training, training's separate from the policy review. Those are two different items.
I would want consistency, about the start to finish with this.
But you know, and this is where, who knows, when you get into it, depending on how, how much time they may expect to go through the policy review, who knows, Bradley might actually end up being the cheapest. So that, that's where I would like to have them say, you know, "We expect to do a policy review, and it's going to take us five hours, ten hours, something, to, to give us a little bit of guideline to go by."
Why don't you ask them for
Yeah.
something a little more substantial numbers in real time?
So will Jacob check into that for two weeks from the next council meeting?
Sounds good.
I guess they're just gonna obtain the actual proposals.
Yep.
Yeah. So, move, moving on to six point four, discussion, possible action on substitution on bid results for discrimination sensitivity training for City of Animals employees.
I think we just had discussion.
Well, if I don't read it, you get, you holler at me.
Oh, we certainly would.
Well, we got to page one, guys.
Uh, six point five, discussion, possible action on resolution approving the subdivision plan for storage addition.
Doug, your, your team, I see, approved and sent a favorable recommendation to the council that we approved. Six point five?
Yep.
And then, I'm gonna get ahead here a little bit, the same with six point six.
Yes.
A lengthy discussion, you figure you've covered every boundary, every scenario, every.
It wasn't real lengthy discussion, um, but, um, I would say the planning of the board was unanimous in their opinion on it. But I think both of those passed without any opposition.
I, I, Randy, where's your animal consultants? Based on the previous conversations, I wasn't sure if I should come up with this. Nor would I would come up.
Or not either.
And introduce myself and offer to answer any questions about the project if you have any, so, that's what I'm doing at this point.
And, and six point five is the bar hand property, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
And that's the one that you're representing, or?
Oh, actually, for both.
Okay.
Yes. I'll give you.
Look at the consistency.
I'll give you a little history of it quickly. Um, all Jill's thinking to do is, is remove Annex Building One and Annex Building Two from the rest of the G A two property, basically the warehouse. The Outlet A that's on there is.